Okay, at this time, this is the planning board meeting of January the 17th at 7:00 PM. Michael, would you start off, please, swearing in the new members to the board? We'll do that afterwards. Get your candidates sworn in first.
I don't think anybody has the actual oath of office, including me, so I'm going to wing it. Those of you who are being sworn in, stand up and raise your right hand. I know. All right. I state your name.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially and justly carry out the duties as member of the planning board of the Township of Franklin to the best of my ability. And I will faithfully and impartially support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of New Jersey.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The open public meeting statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act in annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Township Municipal Building.
Okay. Everyone, please rise for the flag, salute.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Bruno.
Bruno.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Pegg.
Here.
Mr. Ranson.
Here.
Mr. Canute.
Here.
Mr. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Travolone.
Here.
At this time, I would like to do four nominations for chairman.
I nominate Chair Pet, Chair.
Close.
Golefalle.
Golefalle. Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Ranson.
Yes.
Mr. Coog.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Travolone.
Yes.
Mr. Patrick.
Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Yeah, I hope we have a successful year this year. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for solicitor. The current solicitor is Mike Borelli. Is there a motion?
Motion for Michael Borelli, solicitor for the planning board.
Second. Move in second, in all favor.
Aye.
Next is the vice chair, currently is Ralph Travion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for Ralph Travion.
Second.
Move in second, in all favor.
Aye.
All right. The next position is board secretary, which is Stephanie. Is there a nomination for board secretary? I have a motion for Stephanie. Is there a second? I move in second, in all favor.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the nomination for engineer and planer services, and currently it's CME Associates.
I'll make a motion for CME Associates.
Second.
I have a motion, second, in all favor.
Aye.
There was a calendar submitted electronically for the 2023 year's meetings. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to adopt the calendar for 2023, the third Tuesday in March. Second.
I move in second, in all favor.
Aye.
And next is the official newspaper. Rose, somebody help me out. We named a few papers, correct?
The Sentinel and the South Jersey Times.
I made that a motion. All right. Move in second, in all favor.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. Our first, well, first off, anyone in the audience tonight for PB 2210, the Buyers Industry LLC, that application, it's a site plan waiver, and that application has been withdrawn and will probably be heard at the next meeting. First application on the agenda tonight is PB 2209, Adver Construction.
Before they can start off, regarding Aubrey, I mean, regarding buyers, I don't know if they get the impression that they're not going to get noticed, or they are, which they're not sure if they're coming in next month, I assume.
I didn't have the communications.
All they said was it was withdrawn.
They're withdrawing the application.
So if anybody who might be here interested in that, I'm assuming they will get noticed again.
Get noticed again, okay. All right, Rose, take care of that. All right. Thank you, Michael.
The second thing was, as far as our goal calls, we would not be calling the two alternates because we have a full.
We have a full board. Okay. Okay.
Good evening, how are you? Doing well?
Do you have people in?
Happy New Year's.
One of you, who are you starting?
I have the applicant, Damaso Thomas.
Okay. Mr. Borelli, would you do the honors, please?
Yes, if you raise your right hand, sir. It's a testimony you're about to give, and it'll be a truth, nothing but the truth, so what have you got?
Yes.
Thank you.
This application, Taravargo, on behalf of Aubrey Construction. This application concerns property located on Grub Road. You might remember it, it was a former something evangelistic church.
I believe it was a church.
And Mr. Damaso has a construction business, and he has purchased this property and wants to use it for his construction office. The only variance that we need for this application is for lot size. It's 1.29 acres, and 1.5 acres is required. Other than that, the changes to, that are being proposed in this application are to put a fence around the property and to do some kind of facelift type of upgrades, some new lighting, some new painting and things like that. And the addition of a concrete pad in the back where there's already, at the back of the building where there's already an existing overhead garage door type of a thing. So. I guess that's pretty much just setting it up. There's, as I said, there's no other variances other than lot size, otherwise the building's there, there's no additions being done to the building, just internal, you know, to make it suit his business. So if anyone has any specific questions about what he's going to do there, you can answer them.
I think the engineering, yeah, before we go to the board's questions, let's do the engineer review, please.
And here's something I should do before, if we should swear in our engineer, it'll be for the year.
For the year.
And after this year, the testimony you give will be truth, nothing but the truth, self, you got? And you are an expert, professionally, either on professional.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, now, would you like to do a little bit of your report, please?
Sure. If I may, thank you, Chairman. I'm referring to CME Associates' letter dated November 22nd, 2022. Couple of variances were noted in our review letter. I know one you already said about the lot area. The other variance that was noted had to do with the front yard parking. Only 25% is permitted, and it appears that there is almost all parking spaces that are being proposed in the front yard. So that's a variance being noted. The second is the dry aisle of the proposed parking space. I believe at the entrance, which I believe is the northern area of the parking, has only seven feet, and the western portion has only, I believe, four feet. So that is also a variance that has been noted on our review letter. And we noted additional three other design waivers. It has to do with the parking lots setbacks from the right of way. There are no sidewalks being proposed, as well as no curving that exists along the Grub Road. In addition, I believe there's a buffer variance that's noted because of the residential use that is to the rear of this property with that proposed trailer that is being proposed along the rear of the property. There's only, I think, 10 feet that is being proposed. However, it requires a 50-foot buffer.
So what she's saying, basically over here, don't put the trailer parking right up against there. Keep it 50 feet away from the other place.
And I don't see an issue with that, by all means. We can relocate that parking for a trailer. You know, I don't see a problem with that at all. As for the parking lot, you know, we were, that's, it was preexisting when we bought that, that place. That's how it was set up before. That's ultimately how we ended up leaving it. I do understand what you're saying, obviously, with the parking and being able to get past it. I don't particularly have an issue adding to that blacktop if needed.
The issue is the concern that the dry aisle is only seven feet. I mean, even if we consider that as a one-day dry aisle, you need at least, you know, the industry standard, I believe, is a 12-foot or 18-foot. I would let the board engineer talk about that.
Okay.
So, you know, say you're parking at the first parking spot, how is the fourth parking person getting in because of only seven-foot dry aisle?
Are you referring to the parking spots out by Grub Road?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I can also refer to the one on the western because that has only four foot. The rest of it is grass. The concern is there as to how these parking spots would be accessed.
Okay. So Damaso, let me ask you a question, then. How do people get into those parking spots right now?
Currently, there is enough room to pull in there and park. I mean, currently, that's the way it was before. We haven't had an issue with it. Granted, we haven't really utilized the building either. Obviously, if that's a big concern, you know, we can minimize how much parking is in the front there.
Well, I guess maybe I should ask the question this way. Right now, do people just drive in off of Grub Road? So this is like all accessible?
No, they do not.
Okay, you're saying they drive in this way and they can access those?
Correct.
It doesn't make logical sense that it's only seven feet.
Yeah.
How they get in there.
Yeah, so, I mean, ultimately, we only have, you know, I only have one employee that's going to be there all the time, and then myself, obviously.
Is public going to visit this?
This is not necessarily for the public. Now, if I have a customer that has to drop something off, that may be one thing, but it is not for the public. It is just for our office, our storage.
So you're saying you only have one employee?
That is correct. Myself, yep, and one other employee that's in there all the time. All the other employees, they take vehicles home and, you know, they're never at the shop.
Okay, so do you have vehicles that are going to be parked on the front? What type of vehicles?
So likely not. If there is, it would be probably just one of my trucks, and they're just regular light duty trucks.
So no box truck or any type of construction?
That is correct. There is no box trucks, there is no tractors.
I would recommend, you know, although you're saying there's only two of them, that's going to be on the side that range, the concern is still there on the dry aisle. If the northern parking spaces are not to be utilized, maybe that gets removed. However, the one on the western, which is the side of the property, maybe, you know, you do have room to make a dry aisle over there, sufficient amount, in order to be, that be a safe access point for the parking spots.
Okay.
So, I mean, the board engineer will be in.
Yeah, so to build off of Mika's comments, I mean, there's two-fold to this. One, how is the trailer parking area being accessed? One, if you have any vehicles parked on that western side where you only have four foot. And by that, I'm saying, based off what has been depicted on the site plan, you only have four feet behind your parking spots and only seven feet on the side closest to Grub Road. So the minimum standard within the code, and that's only for one-way traffic on a service station, which this is not considered, is 12 feet. So typically, you'll see a one-way traffic around 18 feet and two-way between 24 and 25 feet.
Okay.
So we asked for testimony to be provided tonight, and it's my understanding, you don't have an engineer with you, on how circulation on the site would actually take place.
Okay.
So I understand there's currently no issues navigating the site now, but I don't see how, if you have a truck parked in any of these spots, you're going to be able to get into a spot without physically driving on the grass.
Okay.
So I don't know if you care to comment on that, but.
So on this area here, I mean, we could obviously expand the parking over some, so that way we have, you know, drive to get past. On the front side here, if we're saying, hey, there's a concern and there's really no area to justify that, I mean, option one, am I able to pave this small section here so that way people could just pull in? Is that an option or not?
You're saying just pave, like to?
So this area right here is grass, right in the front there?
Yes.
Are we able to pave that so that way, when you pull in off of the road? Currently, there's a fence, you know, going across the whole front of this property.
Yeah, I mean, because then you run into the fact that you're going to have people backing out in order to get out, and they're backing out to the road.
Okay.
So that adds, you know, I think your proposal of potentially shifting the impervious location onto the western portion of the property to create the adequate, you know, dry aisles required, and also to provide access to your trailer parking.
Okay.
Sounds like a, you know, feasible idea, but ultimately, your engineer would need to, you know, provide something.
Okay. Can he rotate, put two parking spots in front of the building, rotate them 90 degrees? Would that give a sufficient dry aisle for coming in here? And then just have one spot this way and another spot?
You're saying basically not utilizing that whole asphalt area? I mean.
Using it for two cars, but rotate them.
No, no, I see, you're saying physically just rotate it. I mean, I would have to pick it on a plant, but, I mean, then you run into the question with the ADA compliance as well. I don't know how you're performing to that, but I think, you know, we need some explanation and, you know.
Make some revision, something like that, in another plan.
How is this going to?
Unfortunately, we have to. I'd rather, obviously, not.
Right, okay. Right, so.
Whatever you think is best.
So you're okay with losing all the parking, the parking out front and just making a larger parking lot on the side?
Yeah.
And then you can drive to the back?
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, I think what we are recommending is probably a revised plan, the parking layout. We would recommend that. And I thought I heard the testimony that you are willing to move that. What is that truck, trailer parking to be used for?
So that's, I mean, that's just a gravel area that trailers were just going to be parked on, just regular trailers, utility trailers, so forth.
To, you know, store your equipment?
Um, they're, I mean, they're trailers that we utilize, dump trailers and stuff of that nature, I mean, just small utility trailers.
Okay. What, I mean, how many do you envision of that area?
Two, yeah.
Okay, and how would those be, you know, kind of moved out or moved in on the site? Because you would be driving over the grass area and bringing them out?
Yeah, so I have no problems adding some DGA in there, some crushed concrete, crushed millings or so forth, whatever's needed, in order to be able to achieve getting back there without driving on the grass and making a mess, obviously, yeah.
Okay. Well, again, that would be one of the recommendations, maybe pulling it more to the front, because then you can have your buffer.
Okay.
I think one of the recommendations is to add a little more landscaping to the rear. This way, the rear residential property does have enough buffer from this commercial use.
Yeah.
And you won't have to put the gravel all the way to the rear of the property if it's moved a little bit further.
Yeah, and I have no problem adding more greenage in there to try and, I mean, obviously, I want to be friendly with the back neighbor, so I want to try and accommodate him as much as myself and make sure that we're fair to each other.
And you won't have to do all the gravel all the way to the rear if you move the trailer parking a little bit in the front.
That is correct, yeah. So I have no issues with that. Obviously, the house that's behind mine is also commercial use. I mean, he has, he has a company there as well. So, you know what I mean? He has a residence in the front, he has his business in the back. So I'm not sure how that, you know, how that plays into it, because obviously, we're both in the same field.
I don't have a rule, but could I ask what the, with the, how do you get the spaces normally decided, building? Do you have a rule?
I mean, the parking space?
Yeah, space itself. The one in front, I'm sorry.
That was one of the actual comments in our letter, is what we asked him to provide. You mentioned that. I don't have a scale on it, but if it's a, it's definitely wider than the 9 by 18, it was 9 by 18, is what they have in the front. So you have a scale?
Yeah.
So I think what I'm hearing and what the applicant is agreeing to is to make this parking lot bigger over here and have, so there's a sufficient dry aisle, and then also moving this somewhere else closer to the building, and then the access will come through here, and we can have his engineer draw that up.
And I have no problem putting, I mean, if I'm able to put the parking there to minimize trafficking back to the rear.
Right, okay.
You know, that's not a problem with me as well.
Because that would, again, like the impervious coverage would have to get out based on all those impervious.
Correct.
Right.
To answer the board's question, it is a 13 by 25, what's for?
How big is your pickup truck?
Uh, I mean, my trucks fit in a 22-foot garage. I mean, I've put them all the way in there, so. And some of my other trucks are even smaller than that.
Mr. Chairman, I just, just a step back. I think what we're struggling with is normally, the normal process is when our engineer does a letter, the other engineer responds and all this, and we're sort of trying to engineer on the run without their engineer, and it just gets more cloudy. So I think you have to decide whether.
Would it be appropriate to call for a vote and have the, have the parking issue worked out with the engineers? Because it seems like that's the only issue I'm hearing. I'm familiar with the building. The building's been here for a long time. The 5, 1.5 versus 2.9, it's, that building has been there forever. Sidewalk and curbs are not characteristic to the neighborhood, so it sounds like the only real issue, unless the board members see something else here, is the parking issue. So approval with the engineer working out the parking issue?
It depends on how much, I mean, you know, what you sometimes add creates drainage issues and.
I'm going ahead with that, yeah.
Yeah, so our recommendation actually was that they should provide a drainage plan as well, which, if they're going to be expanding the parking area, chances are that it's going to trigger storm work. But there's also a couple other questions we have that the applicant can answer. There's clarification of what's actually being proposed on site, so if I can.
Yep, continue, please, and we'll address the parking slash drainage at the end.
So there appears a sidewalk proposed at the back of the building. Can you just, if and where, it's being, there's a slab, it looks like, all the way at the back?
This thing that, side of the back.
What is that going to be utilized for?
So currently, there's a garage door there.
Oh, excuse me, as like an apron?
Yep, we just need an apron there, something to try and keep some of the dirt and stuff from, from rolling back into the building.
All right, so with, in continuing our letter, you have chain link fences proposed. Our recommendation is to write details for all this.
Okay.
For review. Additionally, the parking spaces per the township code can be durable, all leather treated, typically with millings is not considered, actually, it's not dustless. The ADA comment I had made prior to, and then the lighting, we need your engineer to confirm if any of the things goes offsite to make sure it's compliant, whether or not it has shielding on it. So we need details and further information on all of this, so.
Okay.
Are you proposing any signage?
Uh, so at the moment, we're not. It's not something that we have, you know, we're not putting out for a board out there.
So just so you're aware, that's not then part of this application? If everything goes, you know, as per the code, then you just need zoning permit. If not, you would have to come before the board again for signage.
Okay.
The other question, could you just talk very briefly regarding the operations that you sent to employees, how, what's the hours of operation?
Uh, so nine to five. I mean, we work nine to five. Most of the time, we're out of there earlier than that. And in regards to employees, my secretary's pretty much the only one in there, myself. My guys, you know, come in and grab stuff and head out as they have to. You know, quite frankly, I think I only have two guys that would actually be coming to the shop. All the rest of them, they go straight to the job sites and so forth. When they do come, they're in and out, non-invasive, so.
What type of material are you going to be storing outside?
Uh, so outside, really nothing. Inside is just going to be, you know, whatever we use for roofing, papers and so forth, felt papers and stuff.
So you're roofing, huh?
That is correct. We are a general contractor, but roofing is a big majority of what we do.
The concern I had was, and some of that we've touched on, but, you know, the township, we have a lot of sites we're dealing with right now that have a lot of trucks and supplies outside and so forth. I think it's important to clarify. So you're saying you're not going to be any outside storage?
So there's really going to be no outside storage. There is nothing that we need to utilize outside storage for. The only thing that may be outside, if we have returns that come from one of the jobs, they might sit out there, but they only sit out there a couple days and ABC comes and picks them up. So we don't like to try and keep that stuff. Ultimately, it, you know, it needs to be in the right conditions in order to.
So you're talking about, you call it a storage yard, so there's a concern you wouldn't have, you're not going to have outside storage, you're not going to have other people's vehicles?
That is correct.
Just your vehicles only?
If they got Aubrey's name on them, they'll be there. Otherwise, they'll be elsewhere's.
And how many do you think the max you would have out there as far as vehicles or equipment?
Two. Yeah, two. I mean, I try and keep most of my stuff indoor stored, so the equipment, it's expensive if you want to keep it looking nice, so ultimately, that's what it comes down to.
And that's in addition to the trailer?
Uh, the trailers, yeah. The two trailers, they stay out all the time. As far as the trucks go, like I said, majority of them go home with the guys. My truck, that one sits around sometimes, you know, but that's about it.
What about dumpsters?
Uh, so I own dumpsters. Are they going to be there? Two of them, maybe in the yard. We utilize them just for our waste, pretty much, is what it comes down to.
Where would those be stored?
Um, so I'd like to see them wherever that pad ends up being. That way, all of the stuff is together and it looks nice and, you know, uniform.
And use your standard dumpsters?
Uh, they're tenure dumpsters, so they're small, you know, about the smallest dumpsters you're going to, you're going to get on that end of it. We don't have any 40s, 30s, or 20s, you know, nothing bigger. One of those trailers that would be sitting there is the trailer that moves those dumpsters, so.
Have you looked at CME's November 22nd review letter?
Yes, I do.
Okay, whatever the recommendations are, are you willing to comply with those? Is there anything that you?
So there was quite a few recommendations on there, curving and so forth. You know, obviously, I had a bit of an issue with that because the entire street doesn't have curving, so that, you know, to me, it seemed a little out to put it just in front of my building.
We have no objection to the waiver of the sidewalk curving. It's just to keep it consistent with.
Consistent with the area?
Yeah.
I think you're talking about all the other engineering recommendations in the engineering there.
Let me just review that one. What do we have? The other option is.
Size, which we, come back with.
We talked about that one.
They talked about, you're going to make parking spaces dustless?
Correct.
Um, we talked about the trailer parking area, ADA, you're going to have an ADA compliant parking spot.
That is correct.
And whatever railings and stuff. Um, and whatever railings and stuff. Chain link fence, you're going to have a detail from the engineer. Yeah, that's, yes, agreeing.
Correct.
All those comments.
Thank you.
And just, just so you're aware, there may be additional comments that complement the revised plan.
Understood.
Okay, for the record, am I hearing that he's in agreement, the applicant is in agreement with the engineer report with the exception of sidewalk and curbing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. My one question before I turn to the board and open it to public, that I see on one drawing it says oil tank, which I'm fine with, on the other drawing, it says fuel tank. On the right side rear of the building, is that a fuel tank that fill trucks or is that a fuel tank for oil for heating the building?
So that is a pre-existing oil tank for the heating in the building.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I'm looking at fueling station for trucks.
Yeah, no.
With the proper reason. I'm surprised the firemen at the other end didn't pick it up.
And that's likely going to be removed because I believe it was a natural gas.
Station up against the building is where I'm wrong with that. All right, at this time, does the board have any questions for the applicant before we open the public?
Yeah, I will. Go ahead. You're, on the second page of this application, they're talking about the planning, the landscape and materials, so the back line is a good idea for the green lights. They grow pretty tall and they're all blended together.
Correct.
But I have a question about, do you want to put in pears out front? And there's better, much better.
And I'm, I'm okay with that. Pears were just the first thing that the engineer brought up. I personally like my things to look nice, so ultimately, I want to dress the front up and have that building looking nice and pretty.
Yeah, they're, they're nice in the first couple of years, but I don't know if you're aware, I mean, once they get to, they get mature, they, they split and then you'll end up taking them out within ten years.
I'm aware. I took them out at my house three times so far and put them right back in, so, yeah.
Anybody else have a question? Mr. Tom, entertain a, entertain a motion to open the, to the public about this application. Move.
Second.
Move in second all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in public portion on this application. Does anybody wish to be heard? Move to public, public portion.
Second.
Move in second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Michael, why don't you touch over the, the couple of options here?
Well, one option is to have the revised plan submitted and then have it come back forward one more time so that you can, you know, have everything answered back and forth between engineers.
That's fine.
And approval reflect that or leave the bulk of the responsibility on Ed to try to work these things out and if they aren't, then have, then they have to come back.
Okay.
Can't be worked out.
Okay, and the applicant is already on record agreeing with Ed's report that they will comply with everything in the report except for sidewalk and curbing. So I think we've, uh, would have addressed it. Go ahead.
Clarify sidewalk and curbing on the front of the curb road.
Right, right, yeah, I'm sorry, you're correct.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve PB two-two dash oh-nine with the applicant addressing and the applicant's engineer addressing all the concerns and waiting the sidewalk and curbing.
I'll second. I would move you to second.
Also, the variance is...
The variance on the undersized lot, which is pre-existing.
There were a couple other variances too.
There were a bunch of variants that might be selected for the engineering.
Right, because we might get rid of those spots in front, that might, yeah.
Any, any variant that would be required?
Okay, I'm moving to second. We'll call vote please.
Mr. Constantine.
Yeah.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Coohoo.
Yes.
Mr. Swiggy. Mr. Farrow.
Yes.
And...
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, as stated earlier, PB two, uh, twenty-two-ten, the buyer's industry was pulled and we're going to move on to PB twenty-two-thirteen Eisner Holdings LLC.
Thank you.
We are facing the same issue here, just so you know, from an engineering review letter having not been addressed. So, we'll give the applicant the, at least the opportunity to be heard and let's see how in depth the, our engineer's report is and how much, how many waivers are actually
Okay, Michael, would you like to, where the applicant, engineer, give me about your...
This application concerns a property that is probably also well-known to board members, which is on Harding Highway and Madison Avenue. If, if this doesn't look like what you received in your packet, the reason is that for ease of viewing, I took the center part that was in here on what you have and I just blew it up so we can speak about it better, but it's, it's the, it's just the center part here. So as you know, this is the site of many former restaurants and now we have an applicant coming that wants to do something different in there, much, something that's much less intense. Eisner Holdings LLC is the owner of the property and the proposal is to put a commercial window tinting, vehicle wrapping business here and I'll, and Mr. Eisner will be able to explain to you what that means. There are a lot of variances needed and those are all because this is existing conditions. This building is what it is and he's just trying to take this building and renovate it and turn it into something nice and hopefully a long-term use for the township, which would be great. So really, every variance that's requested here is just because it is what it is, not because of anything he's doing. He's not adding anything on. In fact, I believe he's peeling back some of the impervious cover that's here, some of the pavement, and he's taken out a freezer that's on a slab somewhere on the back of the building. So he's actually improving the impervious coverage ratio there. So I guess we'll look at the engineer's comments.
So I'm referring to the CME associate's letter, dated January ninth, I think you already did mention the number of variances. There are seven variances and three design orders for this application. One, one variance I do want you to address is the impervious coverage. I believe with the, you are proposing to reduce...
Yes.
The impervious coverage as it exists now. Is this only by removing the freezer area or what else are you removing that you can?
No, it's, if you know, you can answer.
It's actually over a thousand square feet of asphalt that's currently right here.
Okay.
And then the septic system goes up in here, so we were going to take that asphalt all out, put grass over top of it and some low, some low shrubbery around the edges.
Okay.
That doesn't come in.
Oh.
This is where the applicant in first place...
He was.
He was.
Okay.
So it's almost a third of the asphalt that's currently on the site is going to be removed and then the, and then the rest of the asphalt that's there will be resurfaced.
Are you removing and replacing the system that is currently buried underneath the asphalt?
The septic. We didn't get to the health department, but if it was the bay, it's going to have to fit with the, with the county health department.
All right, so I'll, I'll jump in here. I know one of the other variances similar to the previous application has to do with Martin. Again, so one, can you provide some testimony typically this is left to the, to the design engineer? The circulation through the site, as I stated on the previous, typically you'll see around eighteen inches for single directional, eight, sorry, eighteen feet, apologies, for single directional traffic in between twenty-four and twenty-five. Here, to be consistent in terms of the full width that you have available everywhere, the maximum it appears based on your plan, I believe is fourteen and a half feet because there's a existing sign that's going to be left in place and reutilized.
The sign is going to be removed.
That sign is going to be removed?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it's actually, I don't think it's even on the property currently. I think it's half on the property and half on the highway.
Mostly on Harding Highway.
Yeah.
So, all right, so continuing with the comments since the, this sign.
Now, that one was, that was just on the facade drawing. That is not going to be signed. The only signing that we are asking for is maybe a, a small eight to ten square feet sign with the name and the address on the front as well as maybe on the Madison Abside Street as well on the side.
A wall sign?
Yeah, just a hanging wall sign, nothing.
So the board can follow along. Uh, this thing that I handed out, the reason why I had that out is because I anticipated us getting to the comment where they wanted to see what the facade was going to look like. This was the architecture, this is one version of the architectural drawings and what we were just talking about is in the lower left-hand corner, there's a sign detail, but the applicant is stating that that, that's not, that's not going to happen, that, there.
Let me call this exhibit A1.
Yes.
With the, with... So I guess right now it doesn't say sign to be removed, but that's what it says.
I don't know why they should have put that on there. It should have been listed on there.
Okay, so continuing with the comments, so now you're at a twenty-two point four foot drive aisle that's still below, you know, the requirements in, in the Franklin Code and typical industry standard. What, what is the proposed circulation through the site?
I mean, there's only so many sites, so many spaces in the front right now and there are two entrances to the property on both sides by the, by those spaces. So the, the way they're separated with the new garage blocked out version part of it, there's more than enough room to, to swing a truck. I mean, I, I've done it several times already and it's, there's no, there's no issues and there's only seven parking spots anyway. One of them's handicapped. We're not going to have that kind of traffic. This isn't a full retail type business.
You see what I mean by circulation? Circulation, you can have one directional traffic or two directional traffic, so technically speaking, you don't have enough width for two ways.
For two, yeah. Could we put one way, you know, one in, one out or something like that?
And that's something that we need your engineer and if you're agreeing to have your engineer...
Sure.
With our office to formulate a circulation plan that...
Absolutely.
Beats everything. That would be our recommendation. So having that sign removed allows the width of the drive aisle to be accommodated better. Another thing that I, I wanted to add, it's actually in our planners' comments, is regarding your landscaping plan.
Okay.
You have, I don't know what the tree is, a second, a second. You have our cypress, you have, we have cypress on the west side or I guess eastern portion of the property technically.
Okay.
Based off of where your existing septic system is, you're not going to be able to plant it there.
Yeah, I don't know why the engineer put what type of trees. I mean, we were just going to put low shrubbery, ten to twelve feet at least. We don't want anything that's going to be inserted into the septic system. There is a wooded lot on the side already that's pretty wooded. We were just going to do some low greenery to kind of freshen it up and make it look presentable.
I'm not with the pocketing, I mean, as long as we are agreeing to work with our office with the type of landscaping. I do have some questions, since you touched upon, which goes back to the circulation, can you tell the board what type of business do you expect, you know, public to come on the site or is it only by appointment?
This is going to be by appointment only. We're hoping, I guess, two to three appointments a day. They would be full day appointments, so customers would come. And basically what it's going to be is it's going to be a vehicle window tinting business where customers would drop off their car in the morning and then we would have it all day and then would pick it up in the afternoon. No one, we're not going to have a wait type play, uh, service. That's it. Apparently, my business is a commercial window tinting company that we have had for twenty-two years. All that work is off-site at, you know, different places, so we're going to use the garage space for a little bit of storage for that and we're hoping to start a little bit of a car just to kind of add to the, you know, the profits on the end of the building with that.
Okay, so it's just going to be appointment?
By appointment. There's no retailer, there's no, just showing up and nothing like that.
And would you be for, I don't know how to articulate this stuff, but is there any material stored on site for that, like any kind of hazardous material?
No, nothing hazardous, it's, no, nothing like that. And everything will be stored inside, there's nothing outside.
Okay. And the other question I had is, currently, this business would only be for vehicle tinting? There'll be no painting of the cars or?
No, no, no car washing, no detailing, no auto body, no auto repair, no auto sales, nothing like that, no.
And you did testify that the vehicle would be dropped off in the morning and most probably picked up at the end of the day?
Yes.
Would there be any overnight vehicle parkings on site?
Maybe so. I have two vehicles now for the business of the commercial end that in the wintertime, because we use a lot of soapy water, water bottles, they would be inside, but they may be, like I said, maybe two cars overnight, but they would be registered insured and they're professional looking vehicles.
Okay. Do you have a question? I think you already talked about. In terms of light fixture, is there any spillover or glare on the outside the property line?
Yeah, that would be an engineer question. I mean, I don't know enough about lighting that, I mean, we don't really need much night lighting, but I don't know what's required. And we definitely don't want to spill it over to anybody or into the highway. I mean, very minimal lighting at night just for security, I guess.
Would you be willing to work it out?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Going back to signage, I see you clarified that the free signing sign would be removed.
Yes.
You are permitted to have two facade signs facing the two frontages, however, the sign area should not exceed more than forty square.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
So as long as, you know, you will be willing to comply with those.
Absolutely.
You won't have to come before the board.
Okay.
And we just wanted to kind of, if you could briefly talk to the board as to what updates would you be doing to the facade of the building?
Well, the, the entire building needs to be redone.
Yeah.
The picture does show the facade. We were going to put a sixteen-foot garage door in the front of it, a full glass light, black aluminum door. The whole building is going to get a metal facade, like a pole barn or pole building type metal, two-tone, black and gray. The building does have a new roof on it currently and then the inside is everything plumbing, electrical, HVAC, drywall, paint. I mean, it's a full, I mean, the building is, you know, is pretty old and rough, so.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to move to the outside of the building. The aerial imagery that we, that we've seen, the existing condition of the asphalt, what is your intention? Are you redoing?
Yeah, like I said earlier, that asphalt will be removed and all the remaining that would be, that is on site will be resurfaced and restripped and, and I think there was a comment also as well as on the side for no parking is what we would strike that as well because there's not a very big distance on that Madison Ave so that no one does try to park there.
All right, so my next comment's going to be regarding deliveries, the type of vehicles here, have you had vans or?
For deliveries of our product, for prices, it'll be UPS truck, FedEx truck, once or twice a week in the mail. You know, there's nothing, we don't have any tractors and trailers or anything like that delivering anything, nothing forkliftable, it's all whatever UPS guy can drop.
So one of the comments we have in our letter is regarding the vinyl fence for the area of trash, but it doesn't appear you guys have a gate proposed?
It was on the architectural drawing, it's not on the engineer one.
Okay, so there will be a gate?
Yes, and it's just going to be a small dumpster. We don't generate much trash, something that we could wheel out for them to, to pick up or if the town wants to give us colored cans, we would do that.
You're entitled to it.
More site comments, stop sign details should be provided, tongue clear.
Yeah, it was on the, there was a stop sign on the detail. I don't know why he didn't put it into the...
Plan.
I mean, on the plan itself, it has the sizes, dimensions, everything like that along with the handicap stuff, but he didn't actually show where they were going to be, but that's not an issue. You know, we have to require a stop sign to be on the, on the exits.
Um, I think you might have actually already answered this question, but I'll ask it again. The proposed garage within the existing building, it sounds like you said between two to three vehicles. Is there going to be two, three vehicles in the garage at one time or is it going to...
Two, I think is going to be the max.
Okay.
The space is only going to be twenty-four by thirty, maybe thirty-two, so you're not going to get much more than one or two in there to...
And then one, one final comment regarding the ADA spaces and ADA compliance, is our recommendation that rate be provided?
Yeah, I, I seen that too when you sent it. Yeah, I've seen that too when you sent it, but the front door is at.
At grade?
It really is. I mean, it's, I took a picture of it, but it's literally this high. The door is right at the parking lot level. So there is no elevation changes or anything like that with the doors?
Yeah, it's just, we recommend your engineer provide the grade just to prove that it's going to be. I have no, no further comments.
Does the board have any questions?
Will there be any signage on the side?
Yes, I think it's what we just assessed, too small on the facade itself, just with the name and the address on the, on the Harding Highway side and just the name on the Madison Ave side. And they will be within the forty square feet total. A little help there.
Good evening, members of the board. The environmental commission had a few concerns about this application. Oh, sorry. John Stippick, 2075 Main Road. So one of the concerns was already addressed by the applicant when he declared that there will be no vehicle washing on the site?
Yeah, definitely no washing, no detailing, no auto body, no nothing.
Okay, great. Because wastewater from.
Absolutely.
Is a pollutant. The other concern was lighting. Considering the building is one foot from the property line here, any lighting on the backside of that building is going to shine into the lot behind it. Now, I think the lot behind it is all wood, so it's not much of a concern, but we just wanted to bring that to your attention. And that also could complicate stormwater. We recommend that the applicant take some kind of measure to prevent stormwater from migrating off of the site because it's a NJDP regulation that stormwater can't migrate from one site to the other. So I think that can be rectified, but we just wanted to, you know, bring that to your concern. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else? Seeing no one at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion, please. And second?
Second.
Move the second all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, alright, gentlemen. Go ahead, Mike.
Someone has the same question we asked before. Did you read the letter that you donated? Did you get that letter that you exacted? Did you get a chance to?
I did. Cyclone curbing. There's no cyclone here curbing within three miles each way of that. So that would be the only thing I would say.
You talked about referring to Madison Avenue or Harding Highway?
Both.
So Madison Avenue, we have no objection. Harding Highway, we would have to defer to DOT as it's the state.
They were noticed on this meeting.
They, there was a recommendation for a drainage and drainage, drainage and drainage plan. So I'm assuming that is going to be included as something in the meeting, it's to be included.
Well, you think so? If there's.
Is there an issue already with the property? I mean, the property's fifty, forty years old. I mean, I don't know.
Well, from the standpoint, you already have a grading plan prepared. From a drainage standpoint, you're reducing the amount of impervious unless you're changing the contours on site, which from my understanding, you're not. You theoretically, you know, would not be creating additional runoff to the adjacent properties. But that's something that your engineer and our office could discuss. But based off of what you've already provided, you're going to have a grading plan with minus, you know, these applications.
Any, any board members have questions? Your pleasure, and at this point.
I second that motion.
And just a question here from both the motion and the second, or thanks to all of the.
Whatever the applicant agreed to on the engineer's, our engineer's report. Getting together and resolving, I think, minor issues with the existing existing.
Well, the balance and waivers.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to. The, our engineer's report, the stormwater report, that was everything that was discussed and placed on the record, except for the sidewalk and curbing, which is already addressed. Okay? You okay with that?
Yes.
Alright, rule call vote, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhut.
Yes.
Mr. Traveler. Mr. Cavallino.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our third application this evening is PB 2214, Site Civil Engineering. You had true or a triple tonight?
Oh, my goodness.
Pitch hitter.
Is there any other turn?
She recruited a six thirty.
I understand.
Okay, so.
Let's do swearing in and I promise I'll remember that you swore your applicant in.
Are we going to potentially testify? I think so.
You're testifying about the situation, will you vouch for yourself?
I do.
So this is a landlord tenant situation. So you have both a landlord and tenant here. The applicant is Site Civil Engineering, that's the tenant. They rent property in Community Commons Shopping Center. And let's see, why are we here? Site plan waiver. We've got a fourteen hundred square foot space in an eleven thousand seven hundred square foot building. And there are no modifications being sought to the exterior of the building, no changes to a parking lot or anything really, no, no physical changes. So I guess that's it. There's no variances needed. It's just the mere, I guess, change of, of tenancy.
Alright, let's, I'm looking at the vendor officer's review here. The, I believe you just stated that there was, is there a proposed signage? I'm sorry, Tara, I missed that. Can we address that?
Yeah. Let's, let's let Bill, Bill is a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey and he's also the applicant. So he can really testify about anything.
Yeah, to swear your credentials.
They did you. Oh, you want to accept him as a, do you need any expert witness testimony? We can get him qualified as an expert witness.
I'm much after. He's actually the applicant and he's the.
Yeah, okay. Alright. So you have signage?
Yeah, we did replace the existing facade sign with the same size as it before. It just says Site Civil Engineering, Land Development, Ecology Services. We don't have a sign on the freestanding identification sign, so we really don't need it. We're more of a destination than, than a drive-by type of situation. So it is just the sign. And we do have, in small one-inch letters on the door, just says Site Civil Engineering with an underline on it, just to hub guide patrons into the, into the office once they arrive.
And what, what are your hours of operation?
Yeah, we're open Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to five. It's pretty regular. Occasionally I'll go on a weekend or something if I need to get something done or something to stay late. I give you some background of the company if you desire. I can fill you in a little bit. I'm a resident of Franklin Township. I've lived through about fifteen years on Cherry Tree Court in the township. I have four small children that are in our community. I started my business out of my home, as myself, in two thousand nine in May. So we're looking at our, we're working on our fourteenth year in business here. We offer standard civil engineering services and LSRP, environmental, wetlands, phase ones, the full gamut. We've done a lot of work for a lot of residents here in the township. We were looking for a building a few years ago to find and we put some offers in and for various reasons didn't work out. So we wanted to be in the Franklin Village District, close to two ninety-five, close to the post office. Makes sense. It's a great location. Talked to Mr. Labby about it. Trekcom was there before. I think it was empty for four or five years before we signed the lease. So made sense, filled up the storefront from him. We didn't have to do anything to the building. We painted. I think we submitted a floor plan with the layout. Literally just painted. Got all the inspections, electrical, the fires come in. We passed all that. So we've been operating there. I didn't realize, kind of embarrassing we're in the business, but didn't realize we needed to come in for the waiver. I apologize. So I think we've been there about fourteen or fifteen months. I believe I haven't had any issues. Our patrons that, that utilize us, we maybe get maybe two or three clients a week that'll come in. We just, again, it's just an office setting. We're quiet. We don't do anything during eight to five. We have the sign. That's, you know, pretty, pretty straightforward on that.
How many employees?
I have six employees right now.
Any issue with the, there was no engineering review.
Right.
The only issue would be parking.
That's where I was going to head next.
Yeah.
With six employees, is that six spots in front of the building at this point?
It is.
And how's the effect the?
Yeah, so since we're mostly a daytime operation where the liquor store, the vets also by appointment, that's not getting a lot. The Hallmark, I see, there's a few in the day. It does fill about half the parking lot in the front. The sides are basically vacant. Yeah, we try to park the company vehicles on, against the road away from the front to have access for the other tenants there. We have three company vehicles, two leave the site every day, one we leave overnight. We try to park that by the street just to, you know, for security and to keep it out of the way. So I haven't noticed any conflict or anything. Mostly the liquor store seems to pick up towards the evening hours. We notice as we leave, it's starting to get a little busy in there. But yeah, then we're out.
Does the board have any questions?
On the application, I see twenty waivers requested.
I've seen the environmental official report.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, we, we haven't seen that, anything from the environmental commission. Okay. Let's say.
Getting nervous.
Somebody else.
Got me nervous, that one. We don't do any remediation on site at all. Thank you.
Hi, Michael. Just for the record, the, we are making a correction. There was a typo on the environmental report that indicated twenty waivers and by having, hearing the environmental people chair out there, that was a typo and it's not, doesn't affect this application in any way. Can you just have the owner verify that the parking is okay? It's not in your fear you're making it a park on the side or is that looking out?
No, parking is totally fine. Most of the vehicles leave, you know. Yeah.
So if the parking becomes an issue, it's your fault?
Yeah, let me know. I'll leave.
Anybody else? No. Move the second and all, uh, rule call, I'm sorry.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhut.
Yes.
Mr. Swade.
Yes.
Mr. Cavallino.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Rome, before we move on to the redevelopment plan, would you please let the applicants know in the future that if they're going to attend without their engineer, as in the two applications, I'm going to have a very difficult time moving forward. Obviously, it's right not to bring them, but at the same time, I think it puts us in an uncomfortable position. And make sure the applicants know that, you know, they're coming at their own risk and will have a difficult, unless the board feels differently, a difficult time hearing an application without their professionals available to answer questions.
Move this.
Alright, thank you. Alright, at this time, we're going to move forward with the interchange redevelopment study that we were tasked to do. Michael, I think from a legal perspective, would you please bring us up to speed on the last meeting, the public portion of it, and our obligations and what we, what we need to do moving forward from here?
Okay, well, the public here has been completed. At this point, it's the board deliberating, discussing, and so forth. Of course, the public is here to be able to witness that discussion. And as we discussed last time, the decision of this board is really threefold. You can, first of all, you could do a recommendation to accept all of the areas designated as areas that need to be developed, none of the areas, or you can, for various reasons, pick and choose what areas you think are properly need to be developed, could be designated and need to be developed. So that is, that is your discussion. And the board is open to have that discussion.
Okay. Mika and Ed, would you like to add anything before I open to the board for conversation? Is there anything that occurred over the last month that you would want to bring to the attention of the board?
Not this time. I mean, I did present the parcels and the statutory criteria that would, you know, be complying under. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the board has any recommendations to make.
Okay. Alright, gentlemen. One more pen you got, my pen. Rosemary, same question to you. Is there anything that? No, really?
Just the Lot Eleven. You know, the board had asked me to look into it. And Lot Eleven, who's an issue with the Boston County Tax Assessor's Office, and that has been corrected.
Okay. They're working on that and that's separate of this. That has nothing to do with this redevelopment plan in review. So that's something that the tax office and the residents are working on. Okay, very good.
That's Block Forty-three oh one?
Lot Eleven.
Yeah, well, let's see. Was any tree or street down there? That was vacated.
That was made, well, yes.
Okay, they vacated that one. Combine the lots.
That's correct.
Alright, gentlemen, we're open for discussion. I'd like to propose that we break these into the three sections like the engineer did the review. I feel like one of the sections is definitely different than the other three, and I don't think I could. Okay. Alright. Maybe make things a little easier on the board. Do them in three pieces per page? Any objections to having discussions on the three parcels?
Just to clarify, Mr. Doyle, you would like to have three separate votes, one for section one, section two, and section three.
Yes.
Is that a form of the motion?
Yes.
I would second that motion.
Okay. At this time, there's a motion to, to vote, to handle the three sections individually on their own, on their own. Michael, do, can we do a, all in favor? Is that necessary on a, on a motion on how to proceed?
Let's, let's do a rule call.
Alright. Stephanie, please?
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhut.
Yes.
Mr. Swade.
Yes.
Mr. Cavallino.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Doyle, since you brought it up, what section would you like to start on first?
Well, in reviewing the plan and the public's comments, just looking at the aerial maps, section three, which is east of fifty-five towards Malaga, which some may refer to as the bad's land. That property's different because that property has a current use. It was cleared for agriculture, own farmer, agriculture's use. The other pieces are wooded.
So we can see. They, up against the podium.
While they're doing that, one very important. While they're doing that, one very important thing, the two members, Mr. Doyle and Mr. Kahoot, they have to certify that they listened to the entire hearing we had last month in order for them to participate in vote.
Okay, my understanding is that they did, and that there's an affidavit that is being circulated here by your office or Rome's office, that they signed off, that they signed off, that they did listen to, so they are, both are allowed to vote.
Because they have a plan, the city office has it for them, they've used it many years, I probably would have them sign that tonight.
Yep.
Yeah, I have watched the video over the last. Also, section three was previously approved for use, which wasn't developed, so that makes it different from the other two sections. It's currently listed for sale, it has had activity, so also, there's a lot of issues with traffic on Oak Avenue where those residents come out, and I feel like that section is totally different compared to the other two sections, which are very similar. So I would propose to take out section three from the redevelopment.
Does anyone else have comments on section three?
I concur with Mr. Doyle. CME did a study, and one of the reasons we're here this evening is that it had to comply with A through H on all the different reasons, all the different criteria, and one of the criteria would be criteria letter C, that it hasn't been touched or modified within the last ten years, and we all are present, that we could agree that it has been touched, the woodland was cleared. The parcel, again, is adjacent to several homes, the parcel has had applications in the past by the same owner, the application was indeed approved, it never was built. It is in the interchange commercial zone, which has a list of several approved uses currently, warehousing is not an approved use within the IC zone. In the future, if we, the township, wish to have warehousing added to that IC zone, we should revisit it when we redevelop the master plan, which will happen sometime during 2023, that's why I concur with Mr. Doyle. Why rush into this? Why push it through? We feel, at least I feel, it doesn't exactly meet all the criteria needed for a redevelopment zone. Therefore, I would second the motion.
So we're talking about section three, which is the clear, the clear piece?
The entire section three.
Everything east of 55, so everything from 55 to Malaga, some of which is township property, there's a little bit on the corner, I don't know, guys.
It is identified as evaluation of study area, section three.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any other discussion? Hearing not seen, on roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes, to take it out, correct? Yes, to take it out. Yes.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Traveler?
Yes.
Chairman Petch?
Yes. Okay. All right, section three has been removed from the redevelopment plan in the recommendation, going back to the township committee. Mr. Doyle, would you like to start on section two this evening, and what's your thoughts on that, sir?
I think I did enough talking.
We're breaking them in good.
We're breaking in.
Section two doesn't have, I don't see a lot of conflict with section two. Yeah, I mean, obviously, in all these areas, these large properties have wetlands areas, that's all regulated by the state, we don't have the power to tell someone they can develop the wetlands, we don't have the expertise, it has to be flagged by an engineer certified by the state. You don't do zoning by a wetlands map because it's not a true line, so it's delineated. So to me, that area has, in my lifetime, nothing has changed, and it's been sitting for a multitude of reasons, in a means of area that would qualify for redevelopment.
Could we put in the same zoning rules with the warehousing on it?
Mayor, can you answer that?
Yeah.
I think at first.
That's a problem with that.
I think that that would occur if, once this property is designated and the redevelopment plan is prepared, then, you know, what is permitted, what is not permitted, and the design.
We can't hear you.
When and if this property is designated, what is permitted, and what are the design standards and bulk standards would be created at that point when we develop the plan?
Got it, we can put that in.
That would, the township committee could determine what would go there, and then the application would come back as an application to the planning board. The discussion tonight is whether or not this area should be included in the redevelopment plan, and not what the particular uses, there's step two, three, four, five, that would determine whether or not a use would be acceptable in the future.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I got the statement right.
What is section two?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do.
What percentage? So do we know what percentage of that parcel number as you're identifying?
Section two is across the line, so the same side as the one that's clear, but west of. Of the other ones.
Mr. Kelly? Eighty acres overall, in section two.
And nineteen of that is, nineteen of that is wet.
Okay, so nineteen, nineteen of the eighty, did you say?
Yeah, nineteen of the eighty is wet, yes.
How much is the access for the public utility? How much is the access for the public utility also? How much is on ticket?
We don't have that, it's not in here.
The BSENG transmission line is, I believe, the easement is about 150 feet in width, that runs through that section, that you can see the cleared section, that's the easement line.
I'm sorry, Ed, this is a board discussion, please turn that map around, is that one, do you have two, two number twos?
These are two, one's got the, showing the wetlands, and this one has just.
I have one waiting on the left.
That's the one of Alden and the head.
For the poll, section two is 100% on the south side of Route 40, and 100% on the west side of Route 55.
Which one do you want us to?
Yeah, the wetland, we want to see that one.
Public or do you?
Just to clarify, make sure we clarify our presentation. These are blowups of what was already in the report.
Yeah.
Right, so this is not a new, nothing new, this is just to assist the board to visualize what was already in this report.
Correct.
Just blowups.
Yeah. What had happened, and Michael's correct, in the book, in the redevelopment plan that was presented at the last meeting, there's a eight by 10 of the drawings, it was asked for, to provide a blowup of that so that the board can have a better visual of what we're talking about. So this is not new information that's being presented, this is a blowup of what's already in the redevelopment plan from last month.
This clarifies that, the parameters for after the redevelopment, we'd say we'd push it on up to township committee, just to make sure that everybody knows that the parameters for the zoning could be changed and set up at that time.
At the township committee, not at this level.
Level.
Correct.
So if 25% of the total acres are wetlands, how much buffer is needed? How much would be actually, would be built on?
So that's something, these are approximations of the wetlands, because again, the wetland area is received from the state map right now, as we work more on the plan, you would have to get an actual delineation of the wetlands, and at that time also, the DPD would review it and let you know what type of wetlands it is, because that's when the buffer depends whether it's 50 foot or up to 150 foot, depending on the type of buffer.
But is it interspersed throughout the entire parcel, or is it just in certain sections, because that will determine whether or not any of it is buildable?
No, the white blue, the white blue is.
Delineated.
Delineated as wet.
Yeah.
I can't see it.
On the far left, which is the top portion.
So it's 50 to 100, also that, but that line is.
You have any additional comments on section two there, or actually, Mike, as well, and Rome, any professionals have any additional comments on section two?
I'd like to get one clarification. So by making this redevelopment, or not redevelopment, or changing the zone, does it make the, does it change any legal use of the wetlands areas?
So the wetland areas are controlled by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, so it's basically, they have the, they review, and usually, they do not allow any kind of development in wetland areas. So even if the township was to do a redevelopment plan, that would, plan would have to comply with the DPD standards.
And the stormwater, septic, drinking water, all that.
Everything would have to comply with.
It's nothing we can change.
And as far as eat, rest from, for the property, we have no control over that because it's a state high.
Correct.
Yes.
And it would have to get DOT approvals as well.
Yes.
They have to, the traffic plan, possibly a signal, or whatever alignment, depending on their use, whatever the state would require for safety in traffic.
I believe so, for Route 55 as well as Route 40, you would have to get, you know, you'd have to bring them up the table, that's still how the access are.
And I agree, Mika, the 55 piece of it, there would never be, we would never get a entrance exit approved, so it's really the Route 40 piece up on the top, the top of section two, would be the only place where they'd be able to exit, not onto a township route, and because 55 is a limited access highway, the only place we'd be able to get the approval is up on the top 40.
Yeah, so exactly what you said, chairman, Route 55 is a state highway, it's a limited access highway, and the fact that there's already an interchange there, we haven't seen, you know, DOT approving, and we get interchange so close to the property, so.
Unless we're a university and a hospital.
I would not say anything, you know, direct about that. So basically, what right now the planning board is doing is, is making its recommendation to the township committee of whether to expect this property to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. The step two of that would be preparation of a redevelopment plan, which basically acts like a zoning standard for the property that has been designated as a redevelopment area. So at that point, you know, all this is discussed, is what the standards should be, what should be permitted there, how the access should be, and, you know, what the buffer should be, and all the standards, yes, would be drawn. And they would again be presented via a public, you know, meeting, where that plan would be presented in a similar fashion.
You could conceivably make that, and then you don't have, it really could never be developed, that was, because we won't have enough facility for salvation or access to.
I think that's, that's something, you know, that's when the engineers would be weighing on the development of the redevelopment plan as well.
If they went into it, what would the financial burden be on the township for the engineering? Would the township be responsible to pay for the engineering on it?
For the development of the site?
Yes.
No, it would be treated like a private.
It's a private application.
Applicant, or the designated redevelopment would design and, you know, come in for cycle, if this were to go.
So going forward, is there a burden on the township as far as any kind of cash already towards the site?
I don't want to answer it as a burden, in terms of task for the township would be to prepare redevelopment plan for this site, in terms of how this site is developed based on that redevelopment plan would be through, if this property was designated, then would be through a designated redevelopment, so it would be on to them to develop the property for the redevelopment plan that's been adopted by the township.
Anybody else?
It sounds like this makes the most sense.
Okay, John, would you like to please, then, in the form of a motion, to move forward section two to the township for their review, the entire section of section two?
Yeah, I will make a motion to move section two forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Constantine?
No.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
No.
Mr. Traveler?
No.
Chairman Petch?
Yes. I have it at. Six, yes, three noes, motion carries. All right, let's move on to section number one. I think the first piece, I would like to talk. Yeah. Go ahead. Is it down here already? All right, we'll do the same thing, let's go to the professionals first, is there anything that you, any of the professionals want to add on to the record or information over the last month with regards to section one?
Joe, there was a discussion about Lot 11, which is what was shown on the tax map, and that owner was notified of this proceeding, and apparently, there was no fault of any, any notice issues or any issues with what was designated. The, I think it was the Manginis, the Miskovskis.
Correct.
Structures actually appeared to be on that lot, so they appeared here, although their parcels weren't part of the area in need of redevelopment, they did appear, and they brought it to our attention, but there apparently was some error on the tax maps that made it look like their structures were there. Since determined that their properties are not part of this, it is actually just Lot 11, which should be vacant, they are lots one and two, which were not included.
Okay, so one and, and actually, you called me by surprise, lots one and two are not in the plan?
No. So, um, you know, we, we rely on the tax maps during these studies.
No, I, I understand that. And, you know, I, I can only deal with the information you're given. Uh, but to my point, the lots one, two, 11 are not in the redevelopment plan?
Well, lot 11 is what we were asked to study. Lot one and two were never.
Were never. And lot 11 never existed. Uh, we're, we're discovering that lot 11 doesn't exist. Uh, it was a tax error. So Michael, would it be appropriate to remove a lot that doesn't exist just for the record? Uh, remove 11? Or how would, how would you handle 11 now we're discovering that there's a tax map error? Should we still go on record removing that lot?
Well, lot 11 is the one we could extend.
Behind, it's limited behind the Mexican lands.
Okay.
Along with nine.
Right.
Well, to be definite.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually lot 11 that we thought was lot 11 is actually 30 block, 3312, lot 11, and it's right next to nine, behind 10.
Okay. So lot 11 is really behind the Mexican lands.
That's correct.
I think it's important in looking at the map, which is easier for all, all of us to do, that little tab.
That whole dog, uh, 4301, right?
So what, I mean, I, I would recommend this board recommends that the committee, you know, not look at this property for the discrepancy.
And that's what, that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to isolate that area, uh, that whole piece.
So I was saying regardless of whether it's one, two, 11, or 12, if you're looking at that map.
We identify as the block number rather than the lot number.
No, you're just. I think you're talking about possibly removing that. I'm gonna call it a tab. So they're drawing a straight line across.
So there's no connection to 11 and 18.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Right.
Michael, would it be proper this time then for someone to make a motion to remove lot 4301 from section one redevelopment area?
Yeah, before you go there, let, let's do that in the discussion and finish the discussion on section one. And the motion would be to, whatever you want to do, in conjunction with 4301 being removed as part of that motion, rather than going through three or four motions on the section unless you want to, rather than going through three or four sections on the motion, we'll just put that on the list of things that would be included or legal advice here?
I mean, actually Ralph, that's not a bad idea at the same. Let's start with, since that was the disputed area, take that off and then discuss what you have left. Um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about designating it as lot and block this and that. I'm more.
Why don't we mark the map and mark this as an exhibit?
I think it's more like drawing a line and taking that out. I guess you have.
Yeah, there's a 4301. Is it down there? Yes, sir.
How long has 4301, lot 11 existed?
For, it was, uh, oh, I'm sorry, lot 11?
Yes.
We're not, we're not sure, there's still a best game. It's probably when the cameras taxes over.
So it looks like it's a mistake that actually has been ongoing since prior to 1982, but after 74.
Yeah, 4301.
Somebody identified this.
The lot over here.
Okay, you're taking the whole dog leg out, right, right there. All right, go ahead.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove the dog leg portion on the northern end of section one, uh, referred to as block 4301, but it does not encompass the entire 4301, just the dog leg portion.
A motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhu.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet. Mr. Cavallone.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes.
This is what I asked me to make sure the public understood that we're basically, we're drawing a line right here.
Connecting the two yellow lines.
We're drawing a line here removing this tab from this section.
So in this, in, in section number one, there is no access whatsoever to Porch Town Road. So that, you know, if there was ever a development, although there's some wet pieces in there, we, we would never have truck traffic out to a resident, uh, township road.
And, and just that we reiterate that there's no paper roads. Paper roads have been.
Thank you.
Yes.
Same question that I had for the other parcel. So the total acreage of this parcel we're talking about is what?
We have it for you, Mr. Kelly.
It's about 180.
82, and how much is what?
Uh, 96.
So now we have an even higher ratio.
So it's 50%.
Would you say 180, it's 96 on 182?
96 on 182.
I have a question for, maybe for senior. Now that we will use that back section, even though there, there would have been no access across that stream, there's no access to this property through any street other than Route 40, correct?
Yes.
So there's not going to be a Leonard Cave or Porch Town Road access. It's not possible with the stream and the wetlands. So you're just dealing with the entrance right now, 55 and 40.
I think it's, I'll probably come up on the parameters. I'm just speaking as a developer myself. I wanted to purchase one of the pieces of RAM on Porch Town Road to make access to that. I just put the parameters of the redevelopment, we probably do, make sure that doesn't happen.
I don't think you could ever get a, there's a way to cross.
Well, you purchased properties on Porch Town Road. I don't know if you can get across. I mean, when you look at the wetlands here, but you can, as John Malady will know, that you can go the road of course wetlands.
So if the property is not part of this study area, that property is not going to be part of this redevelopment plan.
It doesn't make access, so it doesn't access.
So only the properties that would be designated.
Designated, but how about access?
No, you can't even, like.
You can't put a road, you can't come back later and try to change the zone.
Yeah, so only the properties that are designated would be, uh, subject to the redevelopment plan.
Close my teeth, dot my eyes. I've been in a lot of situations where we moved redevelopment for sections. I'm sure that this can't all of a sudden, and it happens all the time, I know it doesn't. So, you know, just say, okay, redevelopment over here, let's move redevelopment over here too, that can be done. So I'm just saying that, you know, it's best to have safeguards in condition that you have teeth than not happen. So we can guarantee there's no access out to Porch Town. Exactly.
one of these properties on Porch Town Road and then can just build a road to connect to this. First of all, that property is going to be regulated because it's not part of this designation, this redevelopment area. That property is being governed by a zoning ordinance. So whatever the zoning ordinance district is over there, those are the permitted uses there. And I don't think road is a principal permitted use where you can just build one. For that, what any of these properties that are not currently studied to be included in redevelopment plan, first that property has to get designated as an area in need of redevelopment. So you'd have to do another, have a professional do a study.
But how does it, how, how is it harmful to put just an added restriction? I mean, it doesn't hurt any.
Can we put an added restriction? We're gonna ask another question. I don't know. Not at this level.
Put your conditions in.
Right, when it goes to township committee.
During redevelopment.
Or in a future application, you would be able to do it, but not, not at this level tonight. Uh, councillor?
Correct.
In your redevelopment plan, the township committee as well as the planning board can set the standards they want to see. And one of the restrictions, you don't want access from Porch Town Road or anything.
I understand you have to. You could always take it out if you need to budget. You'd much rather have it than you have now. You start off with something that, yeah, something that.
Yeah, you would need that to be as a standard in your redevelopment.
Our recommendation is limited to the study area, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Correct. And I think.
But there's concerns about going out on the porch town and Leonard Cave Road. I just want to bring that up there. You know, when it comes to that next step, then maybe that would be looked at.
And I think it would need to be looked at anyway.
You could add that to your recommendation. It's just a recommendation that says as part of whatever you're recommending that township committee considers.
Would it be appropriate then to statement, uh, that none of the areas that are approved for redevelopment or recommended for redevelopment, uh, should be allowed, uh, access to local streets?
That's right.
Yeah, and this way, this way, this recommendation from this board, going back to the township, uh, we're, we're on record that we don't want tractor trailers or vehicle traffic, uh, exiting onto the local streets. Uh, it belongs on the interstate, that's what the interstate's for, that's why it was always an IC, uh, zone to begin with. So, um, you know, I, I understand where you're at, Steve. I think the, if our recommendation would be that we don't recommend that, um, no access to a township road, we're on record doing our job.
A county road, they put that county road.
Yeah, all right. Uh, and then, then it's in the township committee, we gave them the recommendation. And then if an application ever came back, I, I hear the board, uh, you know, everyone, nobody wants traffic on the local streets. So I think when you talk about safeguards, that's where the safeguards are built into this stuff.
Can you fill in that the access is only made on those lots, only 40?
Uh, no, I, I, can I, I, well, if, if you're not allowed on local streets, it would be off of 40. I, I think we're saying the same thing is that if you're not allowing them onto local streets, uh, then the 40 is the only one, uh, access. Who knows, maybe somebody comes up with billions of dollars and convinces the state to allow the exit of 55.
Would they require, would they require for the rest of the property?
That's a good question, John, and I'm gonna turn to Mia because that was one of the things on why is wetlands in there because of the buffers. Uh, the way I understand it is the engineers have a very difficult, complicated formula in determining the buffers and the set of sides depending on whatever building that could be proposed, the amount of, uh, impervious coverage would dictate how much, uh, set of side they would need. So, uh, you want to pick up on that, Mia?
Um, yes, Chairman. I mean, again, that would be part of a redevelopment plan, standards where you could restrict, you know, how much of impervious coverage is permitted on the site, how much buffer area you want to see and how the total, uh, you know, net area or gross area of the property is calculated. Those would also again be part of your redevelopment plan.
What about the standards when the wetlands already set?
Wetlands are set.
That's not, that's not going to change.
That's not going to change. I don't know if coverage was.
No, the D E P is going to overrule that.
When, when you look at that map and you look at the wetland line, the closest residential property to the wetland line has to be 500 to 1,000 feet.
Easy, yeah. So when you look at the proposed wetland line, assuming that that's correct, and let's just say there's a minimum, from that line to the closest home has to be, I'm, I'm just guessing, 500, 1,000 feet?
Well, I mean.
Essentially are a 500 foot buffer against the.
Yeah, I mean, for a residential, but you know, if the, the wetland bumper is 50 foot, then the rest of the upland area is where.
Right, but if you look at the homes, the closest home to the, the closest to the law will happen.
Yeah.
So it's, it's probably closer to 1,000. Where the law would happen from, and they were in property.
In terms of you as a township setting the buffer limit?
Well, I'm just saying if, if we just run this with the wetlands line, assume 50 feet, there's no, there's no residential homes near the upland portion of the site. All residential homes are buffered by the natural wetlands, which aren't going to be disturbed.
Yeah, they can. I'm sorry you have to explain to me three times.
We're looking a lot, there's not space everywhere.
Let me answer something on the previous coverage. Can you use the wetlands as part of your ratios?
In impervious coverage calculation, um, again, like the chairman said, you know, it's again, would be controlled by the development standards that will be drafted by the township committee and a planning board would get to review them before. Uh, you could say, you know, the net area impervious coverage is what you want to set at that.
Okay, so it's not set by the state, it's only the set by the state.
The buffers for wetlands are set by the state.
Exactly, but I'm, I'm getting back to the.
Yeah, impervious coverage and all is all on township, uh, county.
Any other questions, any other discussion?
I would make a motion to leave section one in the redevelopment plan, taking away that small portion which some refer to as the dog leg and not allowing access to Porch Town or Leonard Cave Road.
Any local roads?
Any local roads, make it simpler, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
But you're talking about county and, county and township roads that are running through the area.
Porch Town.
Because Porch Town is town.
Porch Town is town, yeah.
Correct. Okay, I have a, I have a motion in a second to approve section one. We're removing the, what's commonly being called the dog leg.
Yeah, we already did that. We already voted on that.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that we, we have it, yeah, that we have it included in both so there's no confusion. The dog legs included and no, excluded, excluded, I'm sorry, and no access to township or county roads. And with that, roll call vote, please. And this is to approve section one.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhu.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
No.
Mr. Cavallone.
Yes.
Chairman Petch.
Yes. Uh, motion carries eight to one. All right, Michael, we did them in three sections. Should there be one more motion to submit, move this forward with the corrections or with the recommendations on each of the three applications? Should we tie it together or just send it through the way it is now?
No, I'll do one resolution, but it's okay, you covered everything.
You, you're, you're okay with, uh, all right, got it. All right, is there anything else on this before we close the redevelopment? I want to thank everyone, uh, first off my, my board, to the board members. It's been a very informative, uh, very busy month trying to sort through this and I appreciate everyone's effort here to the public. Uh, you know, we always don't agree, or in government, we, there's our time when people don't agree, but the fact that, uh, we listened and you, you listed and listened to us as well, and I appreciate everybody's effort in this. At this time, that'll wrap up the redevelopment portion of this meeting. All right, if I can find my agenda. I got it, I got it right here. Okay, at this time, uh, can we take the sign down, please? Okay, at this time, can we take the sign down, please? Okay, this time I'd like to open the meeting to the public portion for any comments or questions.
Motion to go into open public portion.
Move the second one, please.
Aye.
Okay, we're in the public portion at this time. If anyone wants to come forth, please.
John Stibbick, 2075 Main Road. That was a difficult decision you guys had to make.
That's why, Jonathan, that's why we get the big dollars.
Yeah.
You know, they doubled, they went from zero, they doubled, and it's still zero.
There is. One thing I'd like to express my disappointment about, Section 1 and 2, no one discussed the criteria. The vote was based on whether Sections 1 and 2 met the criteria. There was zero discussion about the criteria. To me, it seemed more like you were, it was a survey on whether you personally believe this area should be developed, which was not the point of the vote. It was whether the criteria was met. And there was no, zero discussion from, about the criteria, either from the public last month or from the Planning Board members this month.
Jonathan, the criteria was addressed in the engineer's report that it had met. No one questioned whether the engineers, you're correct, no one questioned whether the engineer was correct, but the criterias were already in there and met by, the engineer's report indicated that we met the criterias.
Well, those were recommendations by the engineering firm. It would have, it just would have been nice to hear some discussion. That's what I was looking forward to hearing tonight. That's why I attended to hear the discussion whether or not it met the criteria. But, you know, that's what I have to say about that. And I'd also like to address the issue about excluding the property commonly referred to as a dogleg. In the engineer's report, page 23, regarding that section, given that this property provides access to Leonard Cake Road, its inclusion in a redevelopment area may be necessary to properly effectuate a redevelopment of the area as a whole. So the engineer basically said this area is likely required as part of the redevelopment study to effectuate it. So by removing that area.
We disagree.
Maybe.
Right, maybe, right, maybe.
There's a lot of maybes.
But that was, you know, that was a recommendation, just as how they recommended certain criteria was met. It was just a recommendation. Other than that, you know, thank you all for the effort you put into this. Like I said, I know it wasn't easy. And even though not everybody agrees, it was, your efforts are appreciated, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Just have a suggestion, Mr. Petch. This is, hello, comments. You really don't have to answer or debate. We're starting to debate the redevelopment.
We're not going to debate, yeah.
Just let people make their comments and.
If someone wishes to debate, we're open for comments. If there's a debate, it's at the township committee level at this point in time.
Right, no need to react, okay?
Good evening, Barbara Halpern, Harding Highway. I'm very pleased that you did not include the upland site in this because that site could potentially support something that would be not satisfactory to the residents. The other two sites, I'm not sure how developable they really are. You did hear what Mr. Arsenault said about the wetland issues with those sites, and he is a wetlands expert. He said to me, I don't know if he mentioned it to any of you, that these would be 150-foot buffer, not 50-foot buffer, that they're high value, and there are threatened endangered species there, so, and I know that residents routinely see bald eagles in the area. So it's going to be a difficult time getting through this. I also want to mention that a lot of hunters use that portion by the nature conservancy. I've been there, visited that site and seen hunters there. Also, residents need to get to the nature conservancy, so if there is a plan that's drawn up, please, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Doyle, please keep in mind that you can't cut off access to the nature conservancy from this side. It would be a detriment to hunters and to the public not to be able to use that because we have very little open space to use now. So using that, which is not on our properties, but, you know, in a neighboring municipality, is helpful. Like I said, I'm disappointed. I don't think the woods should be taken out for redevelopment zone because they are being used, and someone mentioned to me that they're under woodland management, so they are actually being used commercially under woodland management. So just like the farm, they do provide a commercial use at this time. But also, I don't know if it was clear, but we will be paying for the concept plan. I don't know how detailed that plan is. I understand from questioning prior that it won't involve complete engineering, but it will be a concept plan and taxpayer dollars will be spent for that. Thank you.
Hi, Jean Mangini, Leonard Cake Road, Franklinville. At first, I'd like to thank everybody for all the attention they paid to Block 4301, Lot 11. But I have a question, maybe you guys can answer it, maybe you can't. But in checking all this out for the last month, I can go back online, when I came down Township Office, they told me to, for tax maps, to go online. I could trace it back to 2007, that Lot 11. I don't understand how the maps are because when I traced that piece of ground back to 2007, sure, it goes further, it was 1.21 acres. Then on those same maps, I come up to 2014, and it goes up to 2.30 acres. Then in 2015, that piece changed to 1.98 acres. How, who do I go to? I mean, why is all these maps that are available to me, who's changing them in 2007, 2014, 2015? I mean, whose responsibility is that?
Well, Jean, they were, as Tony said, the redevelopment, the row was tasked with that, and she worked over the last month with the tax office, trying to get some resolution on that, which is an altogether, first off, it's an altogether different issue.
Oh, okay.
Development plan. There's something discovered about this Lot 11. You want to, you want to give Jean a quick overview, or would it be better to talk to her?
Or I can come down to Township, I don't care, just.
Come into the Township, but, you know, the person that's responsible for the tax maps is the county engineers. So right now, Birmingham and Vernick are trying to get to the bottom of how it happened. So each year, like, I'm looking at a map from 1986, Churchill and Associates.
Yeah, I've seen that map.
Engineers then. So I believe that the problem happened somewhere after '74, and your surveys were really helpful to me, you know, because it gave me a starting point, but before '86, because, you know, on 1986, that's where that map that I got through Jason Brandt, I was able to see that the Lot 11 was still located where it's not supposed to be. It's not actually Block 4301, it's supposed to be Lot 3312. So it just, somehow, I don't know if they're, the CAD, you know, when they, you know, were putting the updates on it, or even when maybe the deli, which was really Iona Lake Deli at one point, when I went back and looked at the resolutions, I don't know if when they did the parking lot improvements there, if that's when it took place and there was an error made on the tax map, because that was two lots and then it turned into one lot. It was Lot 13 and 14, and then it turned into Lot 10. But I can explain it to you more, a little bit more, if you want to come into the office.
Okay, yeah, the other thing I wanted to ask, I see that you did a, or the county did a revision December 2022 and took this Lot 11 out. Okay, who do I go to to talk to? Because, like, they did the revision, but you have the survey. My neighbors, they took 25 feet off their property. And it's, the revision was just done because of this, dated 2022.
So when I look at the surveys, the actual surveys closed now with the revision that they just did in December.
Yeah.
But I can show you a little bit better when you come in, because there was, you know, a vacation on Maple Avenue as well in the course of.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with Lot 2, Muskowskis. Theirs was just on the ground in front of me. It was 300 feet. Now their ground went down to 275 feet.
So you also have that, the wetlands.
They don't have wetlands. They're all, there's not a piece of wetlands on their property.
That little E's area that's behind it and.
No, on Lot 2, there's my properties behind Lot 2.
Your Lot 2, so.
No, I'm Lot 1.
You're Lot 1.
Lot 2 is in front of me between me and Leonard Cake Road. They lost 25 feet.
So if you look at your, you know, your surveys, none of your surveys really have the exact dimensions, and they don't actually match up to any of the tax maps either, so for the depth of the lot, you know, and I don't know.
So Muskowskis, the one that goes to Leonard Cake Road, doesn't?
So is that the Lot 1?
No, that's Lot 2.
Okay, so this, I did one Lot 1. Okay, so as far as Muskowskis, they had the 130 feet by 300. That's where it closes now, and then the 15 feet is here, and that goes back to your flag lot, it has the 130 here. This part here is irregular on all the lines.
I agree with that, yeah. But this, this lot theirs, they had 300 feet. Now, according to this new revision, it was done in December with the county, this is only 275. This, this is my property right here.
So and.
This is theirs.
So now, when you look at this lot right here, this was, this was not drawn through, like, a computer. This was actually more of a hand drawing. So these drawings will be a little bit more inaccurate than something that is done on the computer. Supposed to be the most accurate drawings. But as far as the frontage, the frontage matches up. There's, you have the 130 of the 15 feet. This right here was where the problem came into. There was never, I think, so, there was never a Lot 11 that had 75 feet.
Oh, I agree with that. But there was never a question as to Muskowskis going 300 feet deep.
Yeah.
So I'll come in and I'll show you my map, but I just wanted to know where I go to get this figured out.
Jean, you're going to go see Roe in the zoning office so you can work it. We have no jurisdiction whatsoever. It's the county tax maps that need to be straightened out, and there's no jurisdiction on this board whatsoever. If you want to talk to Roe, I'm going to move on with the, if you want to continue to talk to Roe, that's fine, I'm going to move on to the rest of the meeting. Does anyone else have any public comment?
Yeah, I do. What's your outcome for Section 1 now?
Excuse me, sir, name and address firstly.
Bill Petrowich, 81 Benton Drive, Malaga.
Yes, sir.
What's the outcome for Section 1?
Section 1 was approved with removing the section that everyone's referring to as a dogleg, which goes up towards Leonard Cake Road. We removed that section. We put a restriction, a recommendation that no access.
Now, you're talking about something different. I'm talking about the section there at Oak Avenue in Malaga.
That's Section 3. That was removed.
That was removed, okay. That's what, that is Section 1, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, as far as we're concerned, you're talking about Section 3. But we're talking about the same piece, the FAS land piece, that was removed.
Now, what's the outcome of Section 2?
That was approved.
Approved for what?
The approval was the, to send the plan to the township committee that, for redevelopment of that area. And at this point in time, it's up to the township committee on what they want to do.
That's wetlands.
Piece of it is, yes, sir.
A lot of it is.
Nineteen, 19%.
No, it's more than that.
Wait, man, help me out.
No, you don't need help, you know it's wetlands.
2512, 5312. He's talking about 2, that's why.
About 1.
Which one are you talking about?
The state designates that whole area as wetlands.
And.
The state, not you, the state.
Nobody's disputing that. That was said numerous times.
So how can you put it in the redevelopment plan?
Because. It's part of the larger picture.
Your picture, not the state. Now, what about Section 3?
That was removed.
You mean Section 1. You referred to Section 1.
Correct. That's the one I'm referring to, that the Leonard Cake Road piece was removed and restriction was placed on no access onto township or county roads. They can only go down on the interstate on Route 40. All right. Thank you.
Hello.
Don't confuse me with the sections.
No sections here. Hi.
Name and address.
Yep, Mindy Curran, 71 Edgewood Avenue. I prepared a whole thing before I came, forgetting that we weren't going to be giving you our input. But, so, I'm shortening it.
Take your time.
Yeah. So I want to thank you for not including the FASIO land. It's already affected me, you know, with the lack of trees and so on. But I am disappointed that the other two wooded, wetland areas are included for the redevelopment review. I just wanted to share with you some words written by Paul McCartney that I thought were meaningful for this. I've kind of edited a little, and the ending, the rhyme is off, so, but you'll get the point. It's called "Despite Repeated Warnings." Despite repeated warnings, our dangers up ahead. The captain won't be listening to what, to what's been said. It feels that there's a good chance that we have been misled, and so the captain's planning to steam ahead. What can we do to stop this foolish plan going through? This band is about to lose his ship and his crew. Despite repeated warnings from those who are to know, well, he's got his own agenda, and so he'll go. He had a premonition, he said that something's wrong, and by his own admission, he knew it all along. The captain's crazy, but he doesn't let them know it. He'll take us with him if we don't do something soon to slow it. No brakes, the engineer cries. The captain's going to leave us when the temperatures rise. The needle's going up, the engine's going to blow, and we're going to be left down, down below. Despite repeated warnings, our dangers up ahead. Well, captain wasn't listening to what was said, so we went to the captain and told him to turn around, but he laughs in our faces, says, we are mistaken. So we gather around him. Now the, now the thoughts that we have bound him are that we should have listened to the will of the people. It's the will of the people. Regretfully, I don't feel that you have represented the will of the people. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road, Malaga. The trees that were cleared on the FAS land portion of this, was a permit and all the different paperwork filed to clear that lot originally?
I can answer these questions. The trees that were cleared were harvested as if they were tomatoes being picked on farm, because the property is indeed a Q farm, it's in woodland management. Law was established in the state of New Jersey in 1966, and there's guidelines on how a farmer who owns land that is wooded can be harvested. You have to hire a professional woodsman. He assesses the property, he decides what trees to be removed and when. If the farmer doesn't abide by that woodland management plan, he could lose his farmland assessment. Now, sadly for us, the community in the state of New Jersey, many properties that are purchased by developers are placed in woodland management plans, so that the developer can pay a lower tax rate during a period of time before development happens, in case of this FAS land, if it's exactly what happened. The woods were cut down basically as a farm product, a product. Plain and, plain and simple. No permits were needed by the state, no permits were needed by the township or the county. It adhered to the farm woodland management plan.
So the master plan that's in place now has no effect? Somebody can just come in and do this?
Any Q farmland.
Right, which has to be classified as Q farm first.
Can be clear cut.
Right, which it wasn't Q farm prior to this, from what I've understood of the tax records.
There's the right to harbor that.
I understand that, but it has to be classified as a Q farm for that to happen, correct?
That is correct.
And prior to this, it was not a Q farm?
I can't answer that.
Well, I can, because I've searched it.
Okay, I would think this farm has been, this has been a farm and identified as a farm for at least 15 years.
But not, not the 50 acres of it?
Right. Oh, yes, oh, yes, because I actually have records. I'm on a committee in this township called the Agriculture Advisory Committee, and that committee has all the records on all the Q farms within this township. There's probably 4,000 acres within our township that is considered Q farm land.
Oh, there's a lot.
There's a lot. Some of it is open space, cropland. There's a lot. Some of it is open space, cropland that's there now, and some of it, of course, is wooded. Believe it or not, Section One and Section Two are indeed Q farmland currently. And you look at it and you see a wooded parcel and you say, gee, that's gonna be woods forever. The answer is no. The farmer can clear it at any time legally.
So if a person that owns it is not a farmer, how do they get classified as a farmer?
They are a farmer because they fill out the paperwork prior to August 1st of every year with the county tax assessment.
So it gets approved through county to be, to stay as a Q farm?
Approved at the county level, not at the township level. We have no jurisdiction on that.
So when does the master plan come into place? Anything that's not Q farm?
Master plan comes into effect for zoning. Section One is zoned IC and a little bit RA. Section Three, it was zoned IC. Section Two was zoned IC. Within those sections, no warehouses are in approved use. And anybody wanting a warehouse under current law without a redevelopment plan in place would have to obtain a D1 variance in front of the zoning board, not this board, to gain the right approvals to do whatever they want to do. That's not listed use.
All right, well, I'm talking about the tree section of the master plan, the one about clear cutting properties.
Yeah, agriculture, once a property is far assessed, that's the trigger. So once it's far assessed, it has protections. I notice because I'm a.
Right, no, I understand.
Trees and calm down every year, okay? You don't need a permit, okay? You're not allowed to cut the wetlands. When I clear a field, I flag the wetlands, I place the flags. You never have a problem. Unfortunately, like Ralph saying, developers can do the same thing.
Regardless of the effects it does to the surrounding area?
It's an approval at the county level. And the county's approving the state plan, is what they're doing. And that was one of my points at the last meeting at Joe Arsenal, who is an expert on wetlands. There's, it's already approved as a farm. If the redevelopment plan and the township going through redevelopment, there's nothing without that redevelopment plan preventing the owner from going in and harvesting right up against the wetland and arguing where the wetland line is, but all those trees tomorrow could be cut down. And this plan prevents that from occurring now.
So you're saying that you're gonna actually block this with a redevelopment plan? So we've been going about this the wrong way? So you just basically stated the redevelopment plan is gonna protect that forest?
Michael, help me out here. My.
No, I want that on record. That's what you said.
My understanding, my understanding is probably a better word.
Well, we gotta be clear so we know whether we're gonna continue to fight you or whether you're actually for the township. I don't want to see smoke and mirrors or hear it. I'm tired of it. I want to know what's actually going on.
I'm not about smoke and mirrors.
Oh, I've known you long enough to know you're full of smoke and mirrors.
And I, let's agree that we disagree because that's not an accurate statement.
I can find a lot of records to disprove that, but go ahead. Are we in that same context? Is he accurate with that?
The question is, is the redevelopment plan gonna keep the trees or being cleared? No.
That's what I thought.
Well, no, if there's a redevelopment there, but it's clear cutting like the 50 plus acres of FAS land puts it into a redevelopment plan that would, nothing prevents the individual from clear cutting is what I'm trying to say. It's already a Q two farm.
All right, so if you rezone this, it takes the Q farm classification away? So it still can be done?
I'm not sure if it takes it away.
No, no, we passed an ordinance in 2020 that overlaid over any zoning area in our township that farming is permitted use.
Right, so it really, no matter what happens here, they can still do that if they choose to.
Cut the tree.
Right, yeah, that's.
The only way you can protect those trees, sir, and I'm not being mean or facetious, is you buy the land and don't cut the trees down. I'm serious. Now, I want to speak briefly on this topic. The room has spoken a lot against the township's ideas of redeveloping the area. And one could say that the township is against the rural feeling of the community. One is against the master plan. I would argue that. Again, I sit on the Agriculture Advisory Committee and this township, these people in front of you, especially the mayor and Mr. Doyle, have voted to spend your tax dollars to preserve 1,100 acres, 20 farms with your money. There was no way this could have been done without the township committee's approval, and we've been doing this since 2006. So we've been saving open space. We've saved 1,100 acres by year end 2023. Right now, we have six farms in Q that will be preserved by the end of the year. I kid you not, 1,144 acres have been preserved with your money, not the state's, not the county's, not some conservancy, your money. Because this township takes one cent of every tax dollar they collect and puts it in a dedicated open space form, uh, plan and spends the money upon approvals by the board to preserve these lands. This parcel this evening had 380 acres. We have 36,090 acres in our community. This parcel amounted to 1.1% of the entire township. This evening, we pulled out Section Three approximately 60, 70 acres. Therefore, Section One and Two comprise an area of about a half a percent of this township that you may or may not agree if the township committee approves this plan. Right now, this board did not approve this plan. Right now, this board recommended to the township to approve Section One and Section Two, but not Section Three. Just remember, this township, our mayor, is committed to preserving open space.
I can appreciate that. That's why we're here talking about the 0.3% that we represent, because this hits our backyard.
We understand.
These tree removals flood our properties, and this is why we're here.
Section Three was pulled down this evening.
I understand that, but this property that's already been cleared has already caused flooding in our area that we had no control over.
We didn't.
Nor did we.
I'm not saying you did, but I want to know who did, so I know who I'm talking to and who do I go to? How do I stop it from happening on the other properties besides buying it? There's gotta be another way.
There is another way.
That's my point. There is no other way. They did, they got the approvals that they need at the county level and the county is following the state guidelines. So the answer is if you don't want the county to do that, it needs to be changed at the state level. And under the right to farm, I think it's gonna be a difficult task to change.
So I understand, but at least gives me a direction to go. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify something about what actually happened when the trees were removed. I was the chair of the Environmental Commission then, and they had a farmland assessment, but it didn't include clear cutting, so. And they didn't get a permit from Soil Conservation and they didn't get a permit from the town. And I went to town hall and, you know, talked to the zoning official then, and they went out there and made them fill out the application for clear cutting because we do have a permit for that. The problem with the permit for that is you have absolutely no basis to approve or deny. It's really lacking, and I think you should look at that as something that we need to update as a town, that it should be reviewed possibly by the Environmental Commission for their recommendation when someone wants to clear cut. And there should be, you know, reasons to deny or reasons to approve, not just fill out this form and have a nice debt. He had to.
Barbara, the same answer to Dave just now is that the county controls and the county is following the state guidelines. The state, this township cannot supersede the state guideline.
He didn't have permission to clear cut. What I'm trying to tell you is that he had to go back and amend his forestry management plan. And he amended it to say that he was gonna put pine trees in and grow them for timber for lumber. And then he decided after that not to do that and went ahead and went with the growing of the corn. So that's the sequence of events that happened. And Soil Conservation did go out. I mean, whether you're a Q farm or not, if you take out a forest, you're still subject to soil conservation. You know, there are some checks and balances. The town could put their own checks and balances in. They just don't. And as far as open space funds, we're not spending it on areas the public can use. We could save wooded areas for trails and recreation, and we're not doing that. We're selling them off instead. We're not protecting our greenways under the open space plan and under the master plan. And it's great that we're preserving farms. That's really wonderful, but the public doesn't use the farms. It doesn't create that recreation that we need. And on the last master plan reexamination, it said, we're not doing enough. There's a total shortage of recreational areas for people to utilize. So please change your ways when it comes to that as far as a township. I know some of you are new and maybe you don't know this. But we really have to work on getting some areas with that open space money and keeping the areas that we have and give us some open space for people to have.
I agree with you. 150 acres, man. May you talk about it's going to the conservatory?
Yeah, and that's thanks to Suzanne and myself and others who fought to keep mines and solar fields off of it.
Just to clarify, farmers are absolutely exempt from soil conservation. Absolutely.
I.
Turn the ground over. If you had to get a permit, you couldn't be a farmer, so.
You're exempt from destroying trees, is what you're saying?
I'm a tree farmer.
Even if you have a woodland management plan?
What's that?
Even under woodland management plan, not crops farming?
I'm talking about agriculture, farming, not woodland management.
Well, this was woodland management is what I'm saying. It wasn't in agriculture at the time that it was destroyed, basically. It was in woodland management, and it was inconsistent with their woodland management plan at the time. They had to make alterations to it. None of those alterations would have occurred if I hadn't gone to town hall and alerted them that they need to follow these rules. And I talked to Soil Conservation at the time as well, who went out there and made sure they got a permit from Soil Conservation. So there are some checks and balances, as lame as they may be. But we as a town could do more to protect trees and open spaces and provide people with what they want. And as far as, yeah, we're saving a lot of areas all throughout, but this area really lacks it. If you look at an overview, if you go on a GIS map and you look down at this whole area, we don't have much left. We really don't. So we really need to be concerned about that, and there's a heavy burden from the roadways that are there.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, have a good evening.
Anyone else?
Hey there. Maggie McCool on Orowilla Grove Road. Interesting that you're mentioning going above and looking down. My son's pilot flies out of Cross Keys. And when people take their, you know, first experience flights, they are directed to fly over Salem County because it's beautiful. There are many farms, but there are also many patches of woods. And I know, because I have land in both counties and both townships, that if you have woodlands that you're trying to manage, that, you know, it's ironic because it's both, you need to keep the trees there and conserve the soil, but also you have to show that you're making a profit. So there's actually pressure, if people don't understand this, to cut the trees down, which is, you know, unfortunate because that does not promote wildlife. That does not promote wellness in the community. It certainly doesn't cut down on traffic and all that stuff. So that's kind of like a, one of those little nuances. And I wanted to mention, well, never mind, that farming practices are not actually good for the soil or for the people, the way that we farm. Like if we were doing something a bit more like permaculture, if there was more pressure, more incentivization to make farmers do things that were actually good for the soil and didn't create erosion. For instance, if you ride like I do on a daily basis from Franklin Township to the Delaware Memorial Bridge, you will see that different townships are dealing with their efforts to preserve and conserve differently. If you're in Carney's Point, you're seeing warehouses. Oh, guess what? More warehouses on top of where there was sod, which kills the soil, right? As soon as you get into Piles Grove, oh, it's farms again. Upper Fitz Grove, farms again, right? What are you seeing over here? What should we be doing so that we are not becoming Carney's Point? Or, uh, Monica Hill and all that, you know, Sweetsborough. Those townships, we need to look for the good that we have, which on this side is the soil changes. Right where my property is, it changes from Salem County, loamy sand, to Gloucester County, sandy loam, I think it is, or maybe I have that reversed. Whatever it is, this is where we've got all the bramble. We've got all the oak trees, holly trees, got the sand, we've got the wetlands. We've got so much wildlife here that is a little bit different than just across the way over in Elmer in Monroeville. And we need to think about that when making these master plans, as well as are people enjoying it? So for instance, on the other side, you got the Elephant Swamp Trail. I don't have anything against putting a nice boardwalk through from Iona Lake. Oh, and guess what? The kind of people who drive from other areas in Gloucester County to the lake house, they would love to take a walk. Take a bike ride, take the dogs for a walk in there with their cameras. Maybe fishing poles, maybe guns. That's not my style, but you know, it could happen. You know, if, if redeveloping, let's redevelop something that's going to attract the kinds of customers we want to attract. And, you know, the kinds of businesses and the kinds of, I mean, ecotourism is highly promoted. I'm trying to get a farm loan right now for a place in Salem County. Oh, you want to educate the public? You want to do things green? Great, great, great. This is all good. They want to fund that. And I'm sure the same is true in Gloucester County. So, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. I hadn't come to speak tonight. I wasn't expecting, I didn't prepare anything. So an overview on the Franklin Township website says that one of the primary duties of the planning board is to create and update the Franklin Township master plan. And this is a comprehensive guide in the way that we use land throughout the township. And one of the principal points of that plan is to maintain the rural character. I understand Mr. Travaglione, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Ralph. I understand that and I commend the board for what he was saying about how you have tried to preserve farmland, and that's appreciated. But as a resident of Malaga, I feel like I'm getting crapped on, and I forgive my blunt language. When it comes to commercial development, where does it go? It goes to Malaga, which is already overdeveloped. When it comes to low income housing, which has to be zoned due to the Mount Laurel decision, where is it at? It's right off of Grub Road in Malaga. That's where, that's where future low income housing that is required by the state to be built in the state. And this isn't against low income individuals, because I'm middle class, I'm working class. I think most people of Malaga are working class. But where does everything else get to be developed? It's in Malaga. And while that's great, and I don't know if anybody on the board lives in Malaga or in the area of contention, but frankly, I'm getting tired of being crapped on. I mean, I forgive, I don't mean to offend any of you and I'm sure you put a lot of, of thought into your decision, but you know what? When you live in the area, it's really horrible. I feel bad for my children who are gonna have to live in Malaga, because I love the area. I love Franklin Township. But I don't know, does Malaga need to dissolve and become a new field to get out of Franklin Township if we keep getting all this nonsense development pushed on us? Because that's what I feel like it's coming to, because I don't feel like anybody's representing this section of town. And it just, it's infuriating, it's frustrating, and I mean, again, you've already made your decision. So again, our, our hopes lie with the township committee and their upcoming vote whether or not to accept this, this referral for the development zone. But it's just, it's really disheartening. I mean, again, I'm conservative. I'm not an environmentalist. I'm a proud Republican. I voted for many of the people on the township committee, and I think words mean something. I believe a constitution means something. I believe laws written in black and white mean something, and I believe our master plan means something. And I think unfortunately, it's been a dereliction of duty that this has happened tonight. And I, while I may agree with 99% of what many of you vote for today, I must disagree. And I just thank you for your time. And again, I'm sorry, I didn't, I hadn't planned any of this and I hadn't planned to get fired up, but.
Mr. Sayers, just to help you, my family's lived in Malaga for well over 100 years.
Wonderful. So you know what I'm talking about.
And I'm a farmer, and I preserve my farm. I hear what you're saying, and you ask the question, why is Malaga getting dumped on? I'll tell you why. From a planning board perspective, you have 47, 40, 55, all come together where? Non-Janitor, non-Farce Road, non-Star Cross, but in Malaga. Where you have interceptions and roads, you have commerce. Where you have commerce, you have development. That is why Malaga's being dumped on.
And to continue with that, that's exactly what was in the master plan back in 1992.
Smart Growth, yes.
They identified the Malaga Villa, a village.
And the Franklin Village, yep.
And for that type of commerce and development that you're referring to. Dwight, you know, I'm out in the Star Cross section. We're neighborhood commercial out there. You know, the traffic is atrocious out there. You know, there was a accident in front of the next door neighbor's house yesterday. So we all have our problems out there. So no, dumping on Malaga, I don't, I don't think so. It's been identified as an area for commerce.
And low income housing. And low-income housing.
I'm not gonna comment on that, because that's what-
Well, it's a map that was published in 2015, because it was required by the New Jersey Supreme Court that every township needed to do that, which, again, I'm not against that, but I'm saying, where does these things go? It goes in Malaga, and I think there's one little parcel off of Delsey Drive up in Franklinville, and the rest is in Malaga.
But the commercial side of it, the business side of it-
This is all interconnected.
Because of the roadways there.
I thought it was, it was great tonight that there were three applicants that came in front of the board, were in existing buildings, fixing up existing buildings.
It's wonderful.
I walked down Delsey Drive and see the condition of some of the buildings, and I see three applicants in one day that are coming to this board and are, or not developing anything, but they're fixing up what's there.
Yep.
I mean, I think that's what we-
Again, I'm a Republican, I'm as pro-business pretty much as you can get, but-
I want to say something.
Yeah.
I think the misconception is that you think that this board is developing that property.
Oh, no, you guys aren't, you aren't developing, no.
We do nothing.
Oh, I know.
We wanted them out of it, probably not, we don't want it anyway. We bought it, I mean, this township bought that.
Low-income housing, but you're speeding along the-
You're saying that they're getting dumped on, it's a word dumping, like we don't dump on it, not like it comes before, they buy that land there.
Oh, absolutely, but why was it zoned in Malaga and not Star Cross?
But you're saying, insinuating that we're doing that, we're dumping on Malaga, we're not doing anything.
I'm not trying to insinuate, I'm just saying the facts before the- I understand that, but I'm just saying, the only places where low-income housing is put is one little, one little zone in Franklinville, and a large plot on, off of Grub Road in, in Malaga.
The state identified areas. The state identified areas.
They actually came in and-
Okay.
I believe we were the second village in this state to complete it. So I don't think anybody here built on Malaga, I don't think anybody here pushed anything down there. And I don't know how long you've lived here, but Pegasus was probably there, but Talbot's probably there, CBS is probably there. There's a few new businesses, it's the busiest part of town, because of the roads, the zoning's always allowed for that.
I understand that, I'm just, I'm just saying, my personal opinion is, everything, Malaga's already well-developed. And I understand that you want to protect your enclaves that aren't developed yet, and I know with like-
They don't want to build a Dunkin' Donuts in Piney Hollow, because I don't, I complain about driving-
They probably want to build a Dollar General. So just wait for that. Well, gentlemen, I mean, again, I probably agree with you 99% of the time. I apologize that I got hated, but it's, I live here, I'm passionate about that. My kids live here.
We're all very passionate.
And it's just, I, you know, until I see, I see development in Star Cross or somewhere else, I'm gonna feel like Malaga's getting abused, so, but I appreciate your time, thank you.
Frank's Valley 3013, Dutch Mill Road. A quick que-
Frank.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor.
Quick question on forest preservation.
Which one, Ralph? I'm not gonna answer it, because I ain't gonna be wrong.
Okay, well, I don't know if you could help me or not, but if, let's say hypothetically, the township just really got aggressive with forest preservation and anti, you know, against clear cutting, and were to pass some local ordinances about that, would the state stuff automatically just supersede that, or like, how does that all work? If we were proactive on it?
I gotta lighten it up a little bit. When you were on Township Committee and you introduced the wood ordinance, how did that work out for you?
That was a fun meeting, but we did pass- We did pass two forest preservation ordinances that year, in 2006. The forest preservation was intended, I mean, it wasn't gonna just stop any clear cutting, but it was to send a message to outside developers that we're, you know, we're against clear cutting, and we're not just gonna hand it to you on a platter.
Agreed.
So it's-
About 2004, we changed our master plan, and to address your concerns, and everyone's here, we increased our minimum acreage from 1 acre to 2.5 on a major subdivision. That slows development down dramatically. However, we protected the typical homeowner, their child wanted to build next door, and we allowed them to go down to 1.5, go up to 1.5 from 1. So we addressed our water concern, our recharge rate, all that when we went to the 2.5. It's still in place today, I'm a firm believer in it. However, when that happened, I honestly, as a farm owner, and your mother was a farm owner, I felt that the township put their hand in my pocket and took money out, because I could have sold my land to a developer at 1 acre lots and had a higher lot yield, but it preserves our rural being that we are. And when you were mayor, or right after you were mayor, we got involved with the Planning Incentive Grant Program, where we share with the state of New Jersey, the county of Gloucester, and our accounting funds, and we preserve farms. Prior to 2009, not a single farm was preserved in this township with township money. And because of this township's plan, we now do it. So we are trying to preserve the open space. However, we are a planning board, and you put Wawa's next to where there's going to be customers. You don't put a Wawa in the middle of Piney Hollow, okay? You put depots in large buildings where trucks can get in and get out. You don't drive down Porch Town Road, okay? That's proper planning. To my opinion, looking at this as a redevelopment area, I know it will hurt many people when I say this, it's the perfect location. You have three roads that come together, 47 is not far, trucks come into town, you're limiting the exposure to all the residents. I live in Malaga, I eat at the Pegasus, I eat the Malaga diner, go there anytime at dinner time, look out the window and tell me what you see. Trucks, lots of trucks, lots of trucks, and there's no warehouses. So we have truck traffic, and why? Well, it's supposed to be there. It's not on Dutch Mill Road or Piney Hollow Road, it's not in Jan dre, it's not in Star Cross, it's on the highway. Our planners designed to have what's called a highway commercial zone, we have a highway commercial zone. Mr. Mulady made a comment tonight that he was glad to see three parcels on this, in this township that are no longer an eyesore. I drive through this township, I drive up and down 47, up and down Route 40, and what do I see? Empty, dilapidated buildings, and I feel bad. We try to make the town better. Is it easy? No. You've witnessed what's going on in the last two months.
Okay, alright, so going back to my original question, though, I don't know, I don't know if anybody can help, and this is a question, I guess, for committee, I appreciate your comments. But hypothetically, as I said, if we were to get more aggressive with forest preservation, pass some stuff really with some teeth to try to prevent clear cutting, would it come down to a legal issue with the state? You're saying that the county has to do with this, or-
The state, if they're operating under the right to farm, okay, that supersedes a legal, that's the very premise of it. Unfortunately, I don't think people have a big problem, like a farmer, like me, I plant trees, I sell them, there's a few left, I clear that, buy new trees.
Right.
But when you have a person who does it, who may be-
Well, you have these, yeah, these guys impersonating farmers.
Protect the farms and keep it rural, but in doing that, you create a loophole for activities we're talking about. So could you, we already had laws that a developer can't come in here and clear cut the bulk of Walmart or housing development, there's clearing, there's soil erosion, there's all these different things. When they skirt that process, they take advantage of things that are there to protect open space and farmers and allow them to operate, that's the problem. So I don't, I don't know that we could, as a town, we already have laws that say you can't clear cut, but it's not stopping wars. People, if they're using, taking advantage of that right to farm, hang on. But if you did a way of right to farm, I can tell you, as a farmer, you wouldn't have farmers. If they did a way with it, I'd sell every acre move, because you couldn't drive tractor down the road, you couldn't spray, you couldn't irrigate, you couldn't pick your crops at night, you couldn't have animals, you couldn't have fence. It would literally be illegal to be a farmer without that law, so unfortunately, there's some baggage there.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Frank. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none?
Motion to close the open public portion.
Second.
Move second, hold favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Alright, uh, Sports of Communications, Stephanie, Ralph?
Nothing.
Nothing? No, well, good. Alright, I gotta, I gotta do that one this, will you relax for a second? You are, Michael, no reason for a closed session, correct?
I don't see what to spend an extra hour on.
No, I don't want to spend an extra hour. Does anyone else have anything tonight before I ask for a adjournment? You good down there? You good down there? Is there a motion to adjourn? Alright, motion to adjourn, second, hold favor, aye. Thank you.